Good evening. It is Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 5:30 PM, and we are calling this regular meeting of the Wake County Board of Education to order. I don't... I want to welcome those of you that are watching at home and those that are here in person. Wake County Board of Education meetings are conducted for the purpose of carrying on the official business of the school system. The public is cordially invited to attend board meetings to observe the board as it conducts its official business. Persons who willfully interrupt, disrupt, or cause disturbances at an official meeting may be directed to leave by the presiding officer. Members of the audience should show respect for the speakers by refraining from loud comments or other disruptions. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143-318.17. I do want to state, we have about thirty folks signed, we have thirty folks signed up for public comment today, which if everyone speaks for three minutes is ninety minutes of time. And I feel like setting the expectation ahead of time that we're going to go for about forty-five minutes, and then we're going to move on to board business, and then anyone who wasn't called will be called before we go back into closed session. I want to set that expectation early. We also have some students who have signed up for public comment, and they do have school tomorrow, even though it's the last week of school, so we're going to let them go first. So I want everyone who's here for public comment just to be aware of that ahead of time, if you are waiting, just so you know what the expectations are. We do have a quorum. If you will all stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Try this, nope. Is that better? Okay. Thank you, Communications Team. All right, we are now, I'm going to now turn it over to Superintendent Moore for her comments.
Good evening. Congratulations are in order for two outstanding members of our Student Support Services team. Jasmine Trauber, who serves Pleasant Union Elementary and Sanderson High, was named the 2022-23 WCPSS School Psychologist of the Year. And Ms. Stephanie Nelson of Garner Magnet High was named the 2223 WCPSS School Counselor of the Year. Ms. Trauber has been a school psychologist in our district for seven years. She demonstrates leadership through empowering her colleagues, providing training opportunities, and collaborating to improve student outcomes. Brian Tunstall, Principal at Pleasant Union School, says, "Jasmine takes time to hear out her peers' concerns and validate their observations and experiences. Jasmine is able to problem-solve with them in a constructive manner where they feel supported and come up with student-centered decisions that best benefit the child." Ms. Trauber also builds partnerships with parents and students during special education evaluation processes. This year, she focused on improving assessment practices to reduce bias, counteract stereotypes, and consider students' unique backgrounds. Dr. Nelson has been a school counselor at Garner Magnet High since 2007. She is a leader both in her school and in the school counseling profession. Garner High administrators wrote in nominating her for this award, "She has put into action the latest techniques in school counseling, and these have resulted in maximizing their academic, academic achievement of students. She is leading efforts to implement and sustain a data-driven and comprehensive counseling program. She is also known for her enthusiasm and serves as a tireless worker who leads by example. The work of school counselors and school psychologists has never been more critical than it is now. My thanks to these and all of the dedicated professionals who are using their knowledge and talent to improve the lives of their students and families." Yesterday, we announced this year's winners of the 4C Fund Grants. The 4C Fund was created just for Wake County Public School System educators and offers grants of up to $10,000. The 4C Fund emphasizes the importance of collaboration, communication, creativity, and critical thinking in every student's education. This year's grant winners submitted projects that demonstrate exceptional potential to help students develop these skills. The winners are: A team of seven teachers from Edlow Magnet High for a project called "Making Our Stories Known," where students will write their own memoirs and learn from those of others; A team of three teachers from Herbert Akins Road Middle for their project "Growing and Sensory Gardens." Students will create two gardens at their school, one that will produce fresh produce and one that will be a calming area for all to enjoy; A team of four from Heritage High for the Husky Financial Institute, which will link learning in economics and personal finance courses with real-life experiences; A team of three from Knightdale High for their project "Leveling the Playing Field: Bringing Diverse Students to STEM," which will use robots and STEM kits to get students from diverse backgrounds excited about careers in computer science; Erin Wasco of Oberlin Road Middle for her project "Stop-Motion Science: Using Animation to Build Understanding of Our World." Eighth-grade students will collaborate to create science-based stop-motion animations that connect curriculum with global issues and environmental concerns; and Mary Craig Wells from Rogers Lane Elementary for her project "Hop to Success with Math and Movement," which will combine math and physical movement to improve student achievement. My thanks to all of these educators for taking the initiative to develop these exciting projects that will help our students hone their 4C skills. Congratulations to the student staff at Swift Creek Elementary, which has been named a Green Shield School by the Positivity Project. The Positivity Project provides schools with digital resources and training to teach the 24 character strengths, including integrity, kindness, self-control, and empower students to build positive relationships. Swift Creek is the only school in Wake County and one of just eleven schools nationwide to have received this prestigious recognition this year. Green Shield Schools are recognized for demonstrating character- and relationships-driven systems among staff, students, and families, which cultivate lifelong learning and a positive school culture. Many of our schools benefit from participation in the Positivity Project. Learn more at posproject.org. Finally, this evening, graduation season is here, time for more than 11,000 students to take this important step towards productive citizenship as well as college and career. Our Communications Team will be sharing the stories of just a few members of the class of 2023, students who have persevered through adversity to reach this milestone and are now on to great things. I'd like to share one of those stories with you now. Emma Gray Hooper, who will be graduating from Holly Springs High, has battled an autoimmune disease for the past two years that kept her at home for much of her high school experience. Through it all, Emma's family and teachers say she has remained dedicated to her classwork and kept a positive attitude. Please join me in taking a look at this video profile and visit wcpss.net/graduation to find more.
Honestly, I've had a lot of fun because I was sick the past two years, so I didn't get to go to school, but now I got to go for a little bit at least, and it's been really good to see my friends and my teachers. About two years ago, I was diagnosed with PR3 angiovasculitis, and that, like, it attacked my kidneys. And so, three weeks ago, I got a kidney transplant, and my brother donated his kidney. I mean, when I woke up from surgery, the first thing I said is, "No, okay?" And the first thing he said was, "Is my sister okay?" So, we're very close. I was really sick, but now it's like completely the opposite.
She just, she takes care of everything in advance if she knows she's going to be absent or was absent, so she'd be like, "Can I come in tomorrow at lunch and make up that test I missed?" So just that willingness to give up all her free time and to devote towards, put in towards her education is awesome.
My teachers really worked with me when I was sick and stuff, so if I had to be out, they would just help me out a lot. Ms. Camden, definitely, my math teacher, she just really helped me understand it instead of just teaching it.
She thinks that we're helping her, I'm sure, but I know a lot of teachers go out of their way to help the kids on their own personal time, but she doesn't understand what she's doing for us also.
I'm honestly so excited. I'm going to the University of South Carolina, so I'm ready to graduate, and I'm a little nervous, but I have a roommate, she's really nice, I really like her, and I'm close to a hospital, so it's like, I'm, I'm going to be fine no matter what. Honestly, I just had fun with my senior year, I got to take a break and just have fun with my friends.
Thank you. That concludes my comments.
I knew you were bringing a video today. Good evening, everyone, and happy Pride Month. I'd like to begin by wishing our Track One teachers and staff a restful summer vacation, and our traditional calendars, family, students and staff will be joining them on Friday. Last night, the Wake County Commission approved their budget, which allowed for an additional $10 million on top of the county manager's budget. I'd like to thank our partners and in the County Commission for their thoughtful process on this, their consideration for listening and asking good questions, and we heard that balance and that difficulty in creating that budget in their comments, and always thankful for them to be our continued partners in pursuing our students' academic success. As Superintendent Moore said, graduation season is kicking off. I'm excited that tomorrow it starts with Project Search. It is a one-year school-to-work program for students in extended content classrooms, so students with disabilities, giving them access to work and many of them employment upon graduation. And I'd like to thank the Embassy Suites at RTP and Cary for being our partners in this endeavor. It's not always easy to take on high school students for an internship, and it is always exciting to see how different businesses can help our students learn about different roles in the community. For Memorial Day, Holly Grove Elementary School held their annual Memorial Day celebration. It is always, always a lovely and sobering event to kick off Memorial Day weekend. Many thanks to Ms. Ingersoll Knox, Ms. Russell, and Mr. Klein, and the Holly Grove Middle School Band. There was a all-veteran team flyover, and fifth graders read parts of the, or the entirety of the Gettysburg Address, as well as the poem on Flanders Field, and sharing the significance of the poppy, and remembering those folks, not just in the world, but specifically in their elementary school community, who are family members that are no longer with us and served during that time. And so, many thanks to the Hedges for that, and that concludes my comments. Vice Chair Hagerty.
Thank you, Chair Mahaffey. So, I also want to express my thanks to the Wake County Commission, to Chair Thomas, Vice Chair Evans, and all seven Wake County Commissioners for their vote to increase the manager's recommended budget. That will help to provide additional funding that will in turn help us get all of our employees up to a minimum of $17 an hour. Of course, the county budget also supports a number of other important programs, many of which also help our students, and we saw expansions for pre-K and 3K services. And as we look ahead, I hope this can be an area of future collaboration between the school board and the county to really help all of our children get the head start that they need to be ready for school when they're entering kindergarten. So, thank you to them and all of their hard work. Chair Mahaffey and I had the opportunity, it was a couple weeks ago, but now, but since our last meeting, to visit Mills Park Middle School, where we participated in a middle school competition for sustainability in design and ideas for helping our schools both save money and develop more environmentally responsible policies. And there were many wonderful proposals, but the winning proposal, I want to give special recognition to Connor Fan, Allison Peterson, and Varneeka Ravivarma. And I don't know if Mr. Strickland is still here, but we've had a lot of fine young minds with a lot of great ideas that we're going to present to you. So congratulations again to the Mills Park students. I want to take a moment of personal privilege and just say thank you to all of my colleagues around the table. Many of you in the audience and many in the public might not know about the work that has been going on, because it is a closed process, but we have been involved now for weeks in our superintendent search. And this has been a lot of effort, a lot of work. You all have reviewed literally thousands of pages of documents in a short amount of time, conducted interviews, and you've done this while keeping up with all of your other board duties, your meetings, your committees, your transfer appeals, your due process appeals, your student recognitions, your constituent service. And this is not an easy task. This is a sacrifice that I want to acknowledge keeps you from your family, keeps you from your job. I know many of you have taken paid time off to keep up with and fulfill your duties. And so, if no one else has said it, I want to give, I want to express to each of you a sincere thank you for the dedication all of you have made in this process. And again, you know, it's, it can be a lot, and I know especially those who've gone above and beyond, thank you.
Well said, Mr. Hagerty.
I do, thank you, Chair Mahaffey.
You've got one more?
I have one more, and this one is significant. Many of us are carrying a large loss with us today for the passing of our good friend Conan Morgan. Conan was a proud graduate of Garner High School, a very active and influential alum, also a very proud alum of North Carolina State University, a Truman Scholar, a selfless and tireless advocate for so many in our community. Many may not know, but he was also a passionate champion for North Carolina Science Olympiad from when he was just a small middle school student competing himself. His mother today told stories of him taking apart things just to see how they worked, to get an idea of just seeing things from new perspectives, to as a professional and adult becoming the emcee of the statewide awards, and always out there passionately promoting opportunities for STEM and science for all of our students. Conan's obituary has been printed, it's out there, it's wonderful, I'm not going to repeat it, but it, today was a very moving and impactful celebration of his life, was the posthumous awarding of the Order of the Longleaf Pine, and a time to come together with his friends and his family and remember just a wonderful life of a very dedicated public servant. And I know other colleagues who probably express it much more articulate, much more gracious than I can, but it was a life well-lived that will continue to have an impact in our community for years to come, and we remember Conan Morgan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hershey?
Thank you, Vice Chair, for those words about Conan. It is, I'm still in shock, and I will be for a long time. All right, let me compose. It isn't just weeks we've been at it, it's months for the superintendent search, and I was going to thank my colleagues as well for their hard work. I know it is out of sight, so you can only take our word for it, but we take this very seriously. It is, along with creating policy, our number-one job, and my colleagues are putting in the work. I want to congratulate all the people who are graduating. It was a pleasure being at the Young Men's and Women's Leadership Academies for their graduation. I look forward to being at Broughton and Sanderson in the coming week, along with the promotion ceremony at Mount Vernon. I want to thank our Raleigh City Councilors for action that they took last night to raise the pay of our crossing guards. All of my schools are in Raleigh, and Raleigh, and a lot of board members have schools in Rallies. They raised it from somewhere below $12 to over $15 an hour, and so I want to thank the Raleigh City Councilors personally for that. I'd like to thank our Wake County Commissioners as well. They are, they show themselves every year to be tremendous public school supporters, and I appreciate their hard work. It is not easy to be a board that has to ask for money rather than for us to be able to control, have to have tax authority, taxing authority like so many other states do. So I, I really appreciate what they go through for us, so I thank them. And lastly, I'm going to just say happy Pride Month, and I want to address it real quick because people raise the question of why? Why is it here? Why is it there? And we have students and staff and families who are part of that community, and that is a community that has been treated like second-class citizens for most of world history. And when we, when we, the question gets posed and was posed recently, how is this impactful by saying happy Pride Month? How is that impacting students and staff? Well, part of, of Wake County Public Schools is providing a safe and welcoming environment, and you better believe that does have an impact on academic achievement. And so, while they are constantly under attack, it is important for me as a human being to put my arms around them and let them know unequivocally that I welcome them and love them and will continue to love them and stand with them as they, as other people attempt to erase them from our schools and from our life. And so that is why it is important to recognize Pride Month. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Hershey. Appreciate those words. Dr. Ing?
Good evening. I wanted to just echo the appreciation to the Wake County for understanding the need for really supporting our teachers by providing the funds to do so, but however, it does not remove the necessity for us to, as a school board, to look at our budget carefully to make sure that we are using our money wisely in all facets of our operations. I do want to just mention that I had a chance to go to North Wake College and Career Academy for a visit, and it was just a wonderful visit. I had a tour with Dr. Battle, the principal, as well as Mrs. Lacy Garner, the assistant principal, and as well as some students, some seniors from, from that school, and got a really up-close look at what they do and the wonderful program that they have. Now, they, those students have to actually apply to get in, they have to write an essay and all that to get in, and once they're in, it's a very rigorous program with AP courses and college courses as well. And you can enroll in EMT program, Business Administration, Early Childhood Education... And you can enroll in EMT program, business administration, early childhood education, IT, and culinary arts. So, these are real practical career paths, and I really applaud them for doing, having this kind of a model in our school system. And some of them even after they finish their senior year, they go to a thirteenth year where they can get additional certificate and college credits. So, some of them finish their thirteenth year and they're, you know, ready to go to work, and, and, and some of them, you know, actually have gone in to become EMT with, over at, in Wake County. And so, I really, really was just overjoyed to see that kind of a program in our schools. And so, I had a chance to go to their graduation of the seniors there, as well as some other schools, Wake STEM, Magnet High School, the Wake Early College of Health and Sciences, as well as the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program graduation for, for the people at Millbrook High School. And, and I, you know, no matter what path the students take, whether they're going college-bound or going to a career, you know, I think that the future is bright, and I, you know, as long as they maintain their, you know, the ethic of hard work and persistence and, and just focusing on, on their future. And, and I think that, you know, what we're doing here is worth it, and it makes my job just so much more rewarding to see all those people graduating, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ing. Ms. Edmonds?
Thank you. I'd also like to recognize Pride Month. I found this on the U.S. State Department website, and Mr. Hershey, I think it expands on your idea of why. Quote, "Pride reminds us of the spirit of democratic protest and the principle that all persons are created equal and every individual's full humanity should be equally respected. Democracies are stronger when they celebrate the full rights and value of all persons without discrimination," end quote. To our LGBTQ+ staff members, I say happy pride and thank you for your work and dedication to public education. You are valued and appreciated. To our LGBTQ+ students, I want you to know that you too are valued and welcome in our schools. Schools should be and remain a safe, welcoming space for you. June 2nd was National Gun Violence Awareness Day and Wear Orange Weekend. Wear Orange takes place in June every year. It's a time for honoring gun violence survivors and bringing people together to end gun violence. The work of ending gun violence is an important part of school safety, especially prevention efforts such as safe storage and red flag laws. You can learn more at wearorange.org. I've been to, I've been to too many school events and graduations to mention, but I do want to say that at, as this, as busy as this time of year is for end-of-year events, performances, et cetera, it has been a joy and a privilege to watch our students shine. Congratulations to all of our graduates. I will highlight one event. Middle Creek Elementary had a third-grade musical, and I didn't know anything about it before going there, but it turned out to be a performance of songs about EOGs and testing. All the songs were upbeat and fun, but they addressed issues like anxiety and stress. The kids sang about their, quote, mighty minds. There were songs about books, reading, and math. There was even a lyric about multiplying. All of the lyrics were empowering for kids. There was a very clear message of you got this, you can do this. I thought it was really, really clever, a clever way to try and help students relax about testing. We know that many of our kids really struggle during testing season, and I just want to applaud this music teacher at Middle Creek Elementary for using the power of song to try and help children let go of some of that anxiety and stress. EOG songs might be a thing now, maybe it happens a lot across elementary schools, but it was a first for me, and I really enjoyed it so much. The last thing, finally, on another somber note, I want to extend my sympathies to the Combs Magnet Elementary School family. One of their, excuse me, one of their students was killed while riding their scooter over Memorial Day weekend, and I just want to extend my sympathies to the child's family and that school community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edmonds. Ms. Waters?
Thank you Chair Mahaffey. It has certainly been a day filled with a range of emotions. Vice Chair Hagerty, thank you for lifting up our friend Conan Morgan. His legacy is undeniable. Those in attendance at the memorial represented only a fraction of the lives that he changed and impacted, and so I count myself blessed to have had the opportunity and the privilege to know him, and so grateful for, for his service and the impact that we will continue to feel. It has been a day, as I said, filled with a lot of emotions, and just moving into sort of a different element of emotion. I had the great privilege of attending a sweet pre-K graduation at Brentwood Elementary School, and pre-K students are a delight. They do lots of things, they sing, they dance, but they express the best that we have for our future. And I just wanted to take a moment just to lift up our pre-K educators. They are some of our most talented educators in our buildings, and their impact is so profound. The work that they do in these very early years for our children can really cause such important long-term outcomes, and so just want to celebrate the work of preschool educators. And on, on Sunday afternoon, I had the great privilege of speaking at a pre-K graduation, and it was Wanda's Little Hands, and when I received the invitation, I accepted it gladly, and so I was expecting a small intimate affair, and then I arrived to three to four hundred people and was quite thankful for that communication degree from NC State because it came in handy with a room full of families. But what that said to me is how education has the power to bring us all together, the way that all of the children were celebrated, the way that family members and their entire village came to, to share in that education. So, really count our youngest learners, our youngest scholars, really important, and other graduations have also been great to attend during this season. Vernon Malone graduation, what stood out to me there was just how each of the students celebrated their peers. They were so excited to see all the accomplishments that their peers had made, so just really loved the celebratory spirit as they achieved greatness in Wake Early College of Health and Science. What scholastic achievements. I was just blown away by the, the, the number of accomplishments, their bright futures ahead. Really excited to be a part of that. And Southeast Raleigh Magnet High School graduation, I don't know where to begin, there are so many elements of pure excellence in that graduation. That school community reflects so many great opportunities for our learners, and so, really so excited to continue on the journey of graduations in the, in the coming days, and looking forward to celebrating the wonderful times. And one of the graduations that I'm particularly looking forward to is the Millbrook High School graduation. I know someone else on this board is also looking forward to that. As a member of the class of 1996, I will certainly cherish the opportunity to be there. In addition to graduation season, it is also a time where we are seeing many of our beloved going to a different phase called retirement. I wanted to celebrate Principal Cheryl Fenner. Southeast Raleigh Elementary opened that school and has done phenomenal work for so many years as a lifelong resident or, or born in Southeast Raleigh, and her passion and commitment, super grateful for that. I also want to celebrate a wonderful special education teacher from Lynn Road Elementary. Had the great joy of having her in my child's life for, for a long time, and just Cheryl Wilson, if you are listening, or if somebody can pass along that message, just want to thank you for your commitment to kids, and all of our special education teachers, that work does not go unnoticed. And also, a very, very, very special retirement coming up very soon. I'd like to celebrate Chris Brown. Anybody in this room who knows her, knows why I celebrate her. When I was a senior at Millbrook High School, I had the opportunity to become a cooperative education student and work in the district, and so I interviewed with her and didn't get the job. So, I was not her first choice, but the first choice wasn't able to take the job, so I was the second choice, and it changed my life. And I was only supposed to be there with her for one year, but they worked with me and kept me from my senior year at Millbrook to my senior year in college, and it has been a great joy to carry on all the things that she taught me. They still influence me today, so just want to, just thank her for being the best boss I've ever had in, in working more than thirty years, and just want to celebrate all of the things that she has done for so many in this district, and super grateful, and, yes, super grateful, I can't even put into words what she means to me. And then, as we move along in the calendar month, the Juneteenth holiday will, will find us in a few weeks, or probably less than, less than a few weeks, but just wanted to continue to, to encourage everyone to really look for opportunities to affirm the experiences of so many in this nation and to really rally around the importance of telling a factual account of history so that we can acknowledge the experiences, the lived experiences of our ancestors and the impact that, that we still feel today. So, I hope you will continue to use your voice to advocate for the opportunity for education that reflects a full and accurate account of history, so I lift that up to you today. And as I close, just want to continue to express gratitude for our wonderful county commissioners. This is a, a group who has a very weighty responsibility as they manage so many things that impact thousands and thousands of our citizens, and really appreciate their commitment to public schools, and so glad to count them as colleagues and for champions for public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waters. Ms. Coffield?
Wanted to say thank you, Mr. Hagerty, for acknowledging the dedication and time that we've put into the superintendent, which includes some long days and nights and weekends included, but we all know how important the task is, but thank you for recognizing that for all of us, and we thank you as well. Congratulations to Wake Forest High School Baseball, who made it to the state championship. This is their first time since 1977, and they came in second place, so well done, and go Cougars. Congratulations to all the graduates at Knightdale High School. I enjoyed being part of their graduation, and the excitement in the room was, let's just say energetic, it was great. Congratulations to all the seniors that are about to embark on their new chapter after, over the next few weeks. I look forward to joining the upcoming graduation commencements. This is an exciting time, and it may look different for, for many, but I wish you all the best of luck in whatever your journey brings. These last two weeks, I was able to participate in two very important programs that deal with student safety, which looks different to different people at different times. One has, was with a very lovely woman, Alicia Kozak, who turned her very moving and scary story at the age of thirteen into a lifelong career to reach all children of all ages about internet safety. I think it would be beneficial to, from everybody, to hear her story and to learn more about the Alicia Kozak Project. So, she does have a website, you could go on there and learn about her story and see how you can help your child anywhere from, you know, preschool, elementary, the second that they are involved with any kind of technology whatsoever, it would be beneficial, and she does speak to different students at different ages and different levels and different ways to reach whatever they are, whatever level they're at. But I think it would be really great for us to hear from her. Hopefully, we can have her here at Wake County at one point to share the awareness with our students. The other opportunity I had was with an advanced driver safety course. It's called Brakes. Some of you may have heard it, it's for teens. After the students receive our driver's ed program, they can earn their permit, and then after thirty hours, they can participate in this amazing program with Real Life Advanced Driving Program. The program was started by a former race car driver that lost his two teenage boys in a reckless driving accident on the way to McDonald's to get a biscuit. I mention this because someone recently said to me, "It takes one second to change your life forever." This tragedy inspired this dad to reach all the teens out there that he can with the skills and knowledge to be safe on the roads. This was an incredible program, not to replace driver's ed, but to enhance it with advanced training education and real-life driving skills. These teens particularly loved the skid pads track, as you could imagine, but honestly, it gives you really good hands-on experience and real scenarios from the proper positioning of your mirrors, how to handle a car in an emergency, and it even gave the parents some time when you go and take your teen, parents have to go in and they have to take a part of the class as well. It's a nationwide program that has reached over fifty thousand teens from fifty different states in five countries. It's also tax deductible and can be free if you, for most of you, if at the end you want to donate. I think that most people do walk away donating because they realize it's such a valuable program. And I bring this up as a, as a resource that can only add to the safety of our teens as they get their permits and license, and now they go out and to enjoy this exciting time, but also sometimes they lose focus. In this time of graduation, it's exciting, so enjoy and please be safe. Congratulations to all our seniors. Now is the time for you to take all that you have learned so far and soar, so go get them. And that's it.
Mr. Swanson?
Thank you. I want, I'm going to give myself permission to be inarticulate as I'm, it's been a very interesting, interesting day, so I want to first start by thanking the county commissioners for their investment in our public education system and for their support. We know that this did not go as, you know, we couldn't touch all that we wanted to touch, but we are grateful for their investment, and to the taxpayers for your investment as well. So, we want to thank you for that. I also want to congratulate the Apex softball team for winning their championship game over the weekend, making this their eighteenth championship. I want to thank the Apex community for carousing around that, the team, and making it just a, a celebration. In addition, I would want to extend my congratulations to our upcoming seniors as they embark on their, their journey past high school and, and experience the real world. Some of those students are already experienced in the real world, and I want them to know that really and truly from here, anything is possible, and that the world is, the world is theirs, and it's up to them to discover how they want to leave an impact and a legacy. I would also like to take a moment of personal privilege to express, like many, my condolences to the Morgan family. You know what? One thing is life is very short, and we never know what we have with that between the birth and the sunrise. That dash in-between is really what counts the most. And in Conan's forty-two years, which is relatively short, he made a very lifelong impact, and I think he accomplished more things in his forty-two years than many of us could ever dream of, or those who are double his age. And so, I, this is a huge loss to our community, and it's a huge loss for those, including myself, who knew him and who confided in him, and, you know, he never made you feel as if you were a burden, no matter what time you called, what questions you had, he was always there. And I remember, and apologize for calling late at night or something, as I know, this is, this is what I'm here for, and so he was truly that confidant. And if any of us are blessed and privileged to have a Conan in your life, cherish those folks. Cherish life, because life is, life is precious, and, you know, we are, we never know the moments when our, our time comes, but the biggest thing that I want to hear is, is, "Well done, thy good and faithful servant. You've been faithful over a few things." In those words, I think we all should strive, whether we are in elected office or not, that we should strive to do what's best. And striving to do what's best often means there's going to be times where there's, there's unpopular opinions and unpopular moments that you face with, but how you move in that and, and move with integrity is what matters, and that's what Conan displayed. So, his legacy is, is here, and I'm grateful to be a part of that legacy, and so I, those, I continue to support his family and the work ahead, and know that we all have a, a role in this, in this world, and the great thing is that we're all blessed to walk this earth together, and it's how we choose to spend our time is what, what matters, so thank you.
Ms. Johnson-Hussler?
Thank you. And my colleagues have said so many of the things and articulated them well, and, and I can't thank the commissioners in our community enough for supporting and showing their investment by being partners and taking up the mantle of public education when others who...
when others who are tasked with doing the job don't. And it, and I acknowledge their courageousness and braveness to step into a space that isn't necessarily designated as, as theirs, as we look at our state constitution. And so we've all thanked them and I, hopefully our community. And our educators and our families will also extend their heartfelt thanks for their courage and support in showing the community that public education is a pathway for so many of our citizens, including myself, sitting at this table because of our public, because of the public education I was afforded in our state. So thank you to our colleagues and friends for their support. Before I forget, thank you, Ms. Waters, for bringing this up. So many communities have amazing Juneteenth celebrations, but I'd be remiss if I didn't invite people to Fuquay because it does combine the acknowledgement of fathers, black fathers, our black heritage in this country, but also looking at and including our educational institution with an amazing group called Brainsthemology in Fuquay. So please, if you can, it's all weekend. It starts on Friday and ends on Juneteenth, the nineteenth. And so please, if you can, take a look at the great work they're doing. It's all over social media and you will see lots of our students, educators and a board member that'll be engaged and quite, I will not be engaged in their cipher, but I will be there. And so I strongly encourage you to, to look at what I would say is the community acknowledging the need to be united on the ways in which we show up for each other. So please check out the work of Fuquay, Verena and Brainsthemology and their Juneteenth celebrations coming up. I almost forgot and so I'm glad we, the superintendent mentioned the Four Cs grant. I had the great opportunity of spending way more time than I think they anticipated, me being in the building at South Garner High School. They were recipients of the Four C grant last year and so it was Pandora Springs Elementary, East Garner Middle School and South Garner High School who did the Garner Chronicles. So they had four, they used all four Cs and they had amazing support from the community. They interviewed the community, all student-led and student-driven. I shudder to hear the podcast that I didn't realize I was actively engaging in, but, but indeed the students asked really great questions and quite frankly, as I say this, I had not thought about it until as I'm speaking because so much of this is emotional for me and many of us don't live in the moment. And I generally am not a person who live in the moment. I'm a planner. Everything is super organized and I'm thoughtful about the way I show up in this world. And in that moment, I realized with those young people, I had a great time and lived in that moment. And it's not something that I feel like I've been afforded to do because oftentimes, as a black woman, my job is to show up in the ways that people expect me to because my grandmother said that that was the expectation and I've lived up to that, which often means I don't live in the moment and I did with those kids. And I think as you heard from my colleagues about our dear friend Conan Morgan, who absolutely lived in the moment. And most people at this table know, I endeavored upon a huge endeavor in 2020 and so many people supported me, but everybody walked away except for Conan. He showed up for being ways that he didn't have to, I didn't really know him. So that's who he was. And I also think that his spirit and his legacy is about letting your words and actions speak for you. And he lived in his godly principles every day, keeping his word and being a public servant. And while we are certainly in mourning and grieving, in North Carolina, I have been in DC for the past couple of days and it was interesting when I started to tell people I was flying back and then flying back again tomorrow, that several people knew why, because his work extends beyond the boundaries of his beloved home state, North Carolina. And it was great to hear people like the collective pack in DC who were also honoring him when members of Congress were honoring him last week. And so again, a person who understood that the next moment is not promised to us and he lived in that. And so when things are hard and you're making hard decisions and you know who you are and your principle, but people call those principles into question, what I would say to you today is living your truth and acknowledge there is only one judgment day and it is not the people in this room, you all. And he understood that and that is the lesson that I'm going to take away in this moment. And lastly, ask all of you who truly understand the power of prayer and your positive thoughts to extend those to our dear friend Heather Scott, whose, whose husband is in critical condition and I've not been able to get myself together because I heard about it just before I walked across the back of here. And so I'm, I'm going to ask you to pray for her and her two children. And it is a reminder for me that so many people asked her not to step away from this board. And what I would say to you is that she understood something greater than we did and that is the power to have been with her family today and not sitting at this table. So when we think that this work can't be done without us, I assure you to think bigger and harder about where we belong because oftentimes we're told that and we don't listen. And that's another person who, in this moment, I am acknowledging, understood what was greater than her and that was being with her family today. And so oftentimes we get caught up in the fame, the, the kind words, the encouragement, but most importantly, remember whose we are and why we show up in this space. And so I'll ask you to be in prayer and sending and wrapping your loving arms around her and her family. And it is public now, so I was going back and forth. So thank you, Ms. Mahaffey, for not calling on me at the start because I wasn't sure that it was public when I got the text, but it is public now. And we don't know the outcome, but it was very dire from the public comment that has already been posted. So again, if you know the power of prayer, I ask that you extend your prayer and love to the Scott family. And several of us just saw him literally less than a week ago. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mahaffey, for acknowledging something was happening over here for me.
And thank you, Ms. Johnson-Hussler, for lifting her up. I know prayer is a powerful thing and something that means so much to her. And I, if we seem a little shook at this table, please, I know everyone's here for their own reasons, for their own agenda, but we literally just found this out. So if we're going to try to maintain our full attention, but if we seem distracted, please understand that piece. At this time, I will take a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Seven.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right. We do move on to something a little bit happier, which we absolutely need. There is, there is joy and sorrow, then they can live in tandem. So I am going to hand it off to Superintendent Moore and recognize Mr. Stacy Alston of East Wake High School to bring us some joyful news.
Superintendent Moore, Board Chairman Mahaffey and members of the board. Tonight we are honored to bring a recommendation item on naming the main gym of East Wake High School in honor of Coach Miriam Strickland. As principal of East Wake High School, Coach Strickland's dedication, over thirty decades of her life to teaching and coaching at Vaden Whitley High School and East Wake High School, left an indelible mark on the institution. Her journey began in 1971 when she joined Vaden Whitley High School, which later merged to form East Wake High School. Her unwavering commitment to her students and athletes defined her career until her retirement in 2003. Coach Strickland's profound impact on East Wake High School's athletic landscape earned her a well-deserved place in the school's Hall of Fame in 2008. A trailblazer in advancing athletic opportunities for female students, she played a pivotal role in founding the school's softball and volleyball programs. While coaching basketball and softball was a part of her repertoire, volleyball was her true passion. She's deserved, she served as a coach for an impressive twenty years. During her tenure as volleyball coach, Coach Strickland achieved remarkable success, solidifying her position as a revered figure in the sports community. Her teams triumphed securing six conference championships, six conference tournament championships. Their dominance extended to the state level with thirteen state playoff appearances under Coach Strickland's tutelage. Her exceptional coaching ability earned her the prestigious Coach of the Year title five times, four times, which was for volleyball and one time for basketball. Coach Strickland's keen eye for talent and relentless pursuit of excellence resulted in six Player of the Year selections during her tenure. Her unwavering dedication to her athletic, her athletes led the volleyball program to claim one sectional championship, solidifying their place among the state's elite teams. Coach Strickland's contribution to East Wake High School extended far beyond the volleyball court. Her legacy leads, lies in the, her ability to inspire her athletes, instill discipline, sportsmanship and create an environment where anyone could strive both on and off the court. Her impact on the lives of countless students and athletes will continue through her two famous quotes, "Play like Champlinens and the power to win comes from within." At this time, I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Betty Parker, Senior Director of Real Estate Services, to the podium.
Thank you, Principal Alston. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's always a pleasure to be before you. I met Coach Strickland about fifty years ago. So with all of this other joyful conversations that we've been having, I appreciate Ms. Johnson-Hussler's suggestion to live in the moment and Ms. Mahaffey's to, to seek joy. I would offer my meager condolences to this board and the board of commissioners who have both suffered Mr. Morgan's loss. If I get upset, it is my very best impression of Kathy Moore. So this is a happy item. This is a happy moment. It's a proud opportunity for the district to celebrate a wonderful educator. It is with overwhelming enthusiasm that we support naming the main gymnasium at East Wake High School as the Coach Miriam Strickland Memorial Gymnasium in honor of former and much beloved teacher and coach, Miriam Strickland, in accordance with Board Policy 9300. Coach Strickland's teaching and coaching career at Vaden Whitley and East Wake High School spanned thirty-one years, from 1972 to 2003. During those years, she taught health and physical education. As Principal Alston mentioned, she coached volleyball, basketball and softball. She was revered as a supportive mentor, a respected classroom teacher, a competitive and caring coach and model of integrity and positivity. Coach Strickland retired from service with the district in 2003 and unfortunately, a year later was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. She continued to enjoy her retirement and sadly tragically passed away in a car accident on March 5th of this year. Coach Strickland provided exemplary service to the Wake County Public School System and the Eastern Wake County community. She devoted her life to students, athletes, families, school staff, friends and her family and was beloved and well-respected in her community at large. The East Wake High School Teacher Alumni Group, East Wake High School Alumni Association and the East Wake High School Alumni Scholarship Foundation has respectfully recommended that the gymnasium be named in her honor to celebrate her life and exemplary service to the Wake County Public School System and the Vaden Whitley High, East Wake High families and staff. Any fiscal implications for the acquisition and installation of a memorial plaque identifying the Coach Miriam Strickland Memorial Gymnasium will be funded by the East Wake High Alumni Association, Teachers Alumni Group and the High School Alumni Scholarship Foundation from private donations. In addition, the Scholarship Foundation is developing a scholarship in Coach Strickland's honor to support a female athlete with a character and integrity that Coach Strickland had, the financial need, person that's a female athlete and with good grades. So it will continue her legacy and, and the group is very excited about that. We have a, a large group of Coach Strickland's family here. Some you might consider family. Some are close friends. Some are friends for a long time. Some are students. Some are athletes. Some are colleagues. They're all her family. In particular, I want to recognize Mariana Taylor. We have some retired educators in this group and at least one who's had an offer of employment today already. Mariana Taylor retired after years at East Wake Middle School. She was in the car with Coach Strickland when Coach Strickland passed and she has fought back over substantial injury, has overcome a lot and shared that she still has a lot she wants to do. And I'm, I'm overjoyed that she was able to be with us today. So, so I'm glad you're here. This item is for recognition only at this time. The board approval has been requested on the consent agenda. We knew the agenda would be large and wanted to be sure we had an opportunity for the families traveled so far to be able to be here with you and make their way back home. At this time, I understand that Superintendent Moore has some comments and I made it. Let's see if you do.
So I can say that in accordance with Board Policy 9300, the superintendent also enthusiastically supports this recommendation. Coach Strick, as I knew her, was already a seasoned veteran coach in the mid nineties when I began coaching volleyball at Anlo High School. And we were in the same conference at the time. Can't remember which cap it was, six or seven or eight, one of those. And so she was an experienced mentor. And I remember just marveling at what she got from her student athletes. She was a master of recognizing athletic talent and then developing that talent within whatever the sport was in order to maximize performance of the individual and the team. And she was mama, grandma, she was a mentor to all of those student athletes. But in addition to what that has been mentioned today, I just wanted to take that personal point to say that she was a mentor to me as an experienced coach and me, brand new, trying to understand how to best serve the student athletes that I was serving and to be able to learn and grow from watching what she did in her community. As a resident of the East Wake community for thirty, more than thirty years, I have also run into many people over the years who revered her and appreciated all that she brought to the community and all of the student athletes that she served. It is rare today to have an individual who is a teacher and a coach in one of our schools that is coaching year-round. Because volleyball is in the fall, begins August 1st and softball ends sometime in June and you're coaching all the way through. That kind of dedication and passion to the students that she served is just not seen very often. And, and just an additional piece of why she was incredibly special and really deserving of this recognition and this honor, which again, I enthusiastically support. And I will stop there.
Thank you, Superintendent Moore. And thank you, Ms. Parker, Mr. Alston and to all of you who came here to support and honor her memory. I don't think I could say it any better than that. So thank you for being here and...
And as Ms. Parker mentioned, this is an item that is on the consent agenda later this evening, but has been our practice in the last few years. We do the recognition as an item prior to the consent agenda being adopted so that they don't have to stay for the whole thing. Thank you. And thank you to all of you for coming this evening. It really is special to see you all here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We now will move on to public comment. Speakers commenting on items on tonight's agenda will be heard before speakers commenting on other topics. Today, we have no one signed up for any on-agenda topics. All speakers will be heard in order of sign-up. As I said, at the top of the, of the board meeting, we do have some students that I took a personal privilege of moving them to the top of the agenda item as they have school tomorrow. If the public comment portion of the agenda exceeds thirty minutes, the board policy states that the board chair reserves the right to conduct other board business before inviting the remaining speakers to the podium. Again, as I shared at the top, we're going to go for forty-five minutes and then we can stop. If you have not been called at those forty-five minutes, you are welcome and you cannot stay. You are welcome to send us an email. I understand not everybody can stay the whole time. Members of the public are welcome to offer comments or... Members of the public are welcome to offer comments or criticism directed at substantive ideas, actions, or procedures of the board and individual board members. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel and individual student matters are confidential, and therefore not appropriate for public comment settings. Those offering comments to the board, including students, may discuss issues and matters of general concern. Concerns related to personnel issues or student matters may be addressed through applicable WCPSS personnel, the grievance policy, or other applicable policies. During public comment, you may speak for up to three minutes. A green light will illuminate at the podium when you begin. A yellow light will light up, along with an audio tone, when there are 30 seconds remaining in your time, and a red light, along with an audible tone, will signal that your time is up. Please finish so that the next speaker can be called to the podium. In the interest of maintaining civility and decorum, speakers are encouraged to address their comments to the Board of Education, and to refrain from personal attacks and insults directed at the board, individual board members, staff, or other members of the general public. Any materials you wish to share with the board should be handed to our board attorney either before or after your comments. First up, Cora Wexler, followed by Oliver Bestamit.
My name is Cora Wexler, and this is Arjun Shaw, Jennifer Sauter, Ainsley Turner, and Oliver Bestamit. And we are eighth-grade students at Diller Drive Magna Middle School. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening. I want to start by saying that we understand the school board is not solely able to solve the issue of gun violence in our country. There are multiple causes to consider, like the fact that almost anyone can easily purchase and use assault weapons without proper background checks. However, part of the school board's responsibility is to ensure that students feel safe at school. Unfortunately, that's not the case. Every time I step foot into school, my stomach tightens with fear. Disturbing images of kids my age being shot flash through my mind. It's disheartening that people's right to bear arms takes away my right to feel safe at school. In my opinion, no average citizen has the right to a semi-automatic weapon. This is why we're here, talking to you. The bottom line is, we don't feel safe at school. This is why we need to get more safety measures implemented into our school. We understand that there are certain improvements already underway, but we need to see immediate action if we want anything to get better.
Since the 1999 Columbine shooting, over 352,000 kids have experienced gun violence at school. That's almost half a million kids in less than 25 years. Even in the last five years, 113 people have been killed and 297 have been injured due to school shootings. However, when looking at statistics, we must keep in mind that these aren't just numbers. These are actual people being injured and dying. Even if they are not physically being injured, they're being impacted in a multitude of different ways. Studies conducted by Stanford's Institute for Economic Policy Research showed that students took a higher rate of antidepressants after shooting at their school, had much lower average test scores, were more likely to repeat a grade, were less likely to graduate high school and go to college, and had lower earnings than the average earnings of a person in their 20s.
With all this in mind, we must ask, what actions are being put in place to ensure our safety? We are aware that there are some measures that will eventually be put in place, but they must be sped up. We cannot just sit idly waiting for these plans to come to fruition years after we have graduated, continuing our constant fear every single day that a school shooting could occur in our school with the result of our classmates perishing. Numerous windows in schools across the county are lacking the basic protection and privacy that would make us feel remotely safe. Countless doors are without adequate window covers, leading teachers to tape largely see-through sheets of notebook paper to their doors, windows, and a futile attempt to give their students even the slightest bit of safety. Installing thicker blinds or covering door windows with black laminated paper to prevent outsiders from staying inside could mean the distinction between life and death.
Wake County is 71st out of 100 counties in North Carolina in the percentage of revenue from taxes allocated, education, and school safety. On top of that, most of the money accumulated from the North Carolina Education Lottery is not actually provided to the schools themselves so they can afford proper safety measures. This must be amended with new policies and procedures so that our mission of making our schools safe is actually attainable. If schools receive more funding specifically dedicated to enhancing safety measures and making the school building more secure, it would truly make a difference.
So, with all that said and done, what have we actually come here to accomplish? We're witnessing other counties and states in the nation take action and investing the money to ensure safety in schools. Two examples would be the Dallas Independent School District in Texas requiring clear backpacks for all students, and the Hemet Unified School District in Southern California starting to transition to electronic door locks on classrooms. These are actionable steps that other places in the country have taken, and they could easily be enacted here in Wake County. We've come here to show you that we, the very people, your goal is to protect and support, do not feel safe with the current conditions that we're left with in our schools. Our requests are quite reasonable. These solutions, as we know, won't magically solve everything, nor do they represent the entirety of the problem, but they're a starting point and a step in the right direction. We have to start somewhere. We hope that you take these issues we've presented today into consideration, and that you view our words as a wake-up call to the tremendous growing issue of school safety. Thank you for hearing us out tonight, and I think I speak for all of us when we offer our condolences for your loss.
Our next speaker is Dennis Berwin, followed by Timothy Kelly.
I did not expect to be first. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a long time since I spoke here. Sadly, in the interim, not much changed. For seven hours each day, guardians of precious lives expect those students back to wherever home is in hope those growing lives were enriched. As parents, now grandparents, and taxpayers, there's a seemingly simple expectation that the day passed safely and you offered new knowledge to them. Ideally, moments with educators expanded and instilled their love for learning, not just the required facts and figures that we, as a shared society, value, but a spark that becomes a raging fire for lifelong inquiry. That, simply put, is your mission. What's actually happening? Failures. You rely over and over on the same educational experts with no real positive change in academic outcomes. Did relying on experts during the Wuhan flu teach us that relying on experts is the best idea? Shuttering schools multiplied learning losses. I realize, as elected board members, you're not necessarily experts in education. Do you realize that? Perhaps you should trust those in the classroom more. Perhaps, and this is an unpopular opinion, you should trust parents and guardians more. Is there something you dare not say to us about what you think about us as guardians, parents, and grandparents? You've enriched the educational consultants, grifters, really. They may have good intentions, but the actual results are plain to see. Results? Dismal. More suicides, increased promiscuity and licentious behaviors, lower academic results. Spending time and resources on everything except inquiry and learning. Are schools medical facilities? When did it become your job in any way to supplement what local government doesn't provide? It didn't. Take an honest moment of self-reflection beyond your pedagogic bubble. Is what you're doing and what you've been doing truly effective? Has the academic setting bitten off more than it can chew? Are you trying to do things never envisioned to be done by a Board of Education? Interfering with teachers' teaching, interfering with parents' parenting, and allowing elements of fringe groups to run rampant in our schools? I also thought public schools were for everyone, which makes things challenging. When you let small demographics act as though they represent the whole, you failed. Tossing around words like inclusion, diversity, equity, while simultaneously altering their meanings and enabling extremists to feel better about themselves. At the same time, the policymaking part of this board ignores increasing rates of suicide and the many voices silenced by inclusive and abusive demands. It's like a self-fulfilling prophecy. It's sad, and it's wrong. Doesn't do anything to guide students to love learning. You treat children like adults. That's abusive. Some like to paint those who come and share these concerns with you as a minority are somehow radical. We respect and include you while you close your ears and eyes to common sense and protection of the vulnerable. You can do better. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Timothy Kelly, followed by Janet Peterson.
You stole my thunder, ma'am. You didn't realize it, but you stole my thunder when you talked about safety and the tower. You don't realize it, but Proverbs 18:10 talks about the tower and the safe space of the tower. The schools are that safe space. And where did those children go? They left, okay? So I'm going to piggyback off what those kids said. All right? At 17 years old, I went through the Marine Corps Infantry Training Program. Learned one word that was drilled into our heads. It's called perimeter. You have an armed deputy standing right over there on your perimeter, right? Her job is, if I was to violate your perimeter, her job is to come and put me in custody, right? Yet you don't give the students that same equal protection of an armed agent on the perimeter. Does that make sense? But you'll sit here, teachers will sit here, administrators will sit here, and my dad was a superintendent of schools, and he was also a pastor. So I've had a lot of book knowledge come into my head. Perimeter security is everything. If you don't stop that threat, whether it's a gun or a knife, or a ball bat, at the perimeter of the school, once they're inside, it's too late. We've seen that in every single time. You said it yourself, sir, life is what? Precious. And every one of those kids are precious. They're our future, to sound cliche, and we don't protect them. We have scanners, we have ID cards. That's all great. It's a great start. But in my world, I specialize in perimeter security. I guard people for a living, doing close protection work. I was a police officer in Rochester, New York. I worked in the Marshal Service guarding judges. What was the one thing that was drilled into our heads at every one of those career paths I took? Perimeter security. And if you're even in any way questioning it, go back about a month ago in Raleigh, and what happened? Because y'all know what happened. They had a man with a rifle coming down the street. Raleigh Police responded, and what did the Raleigh Police do? They killed him before he got to the school. They got him on the outer perimeter, because they knew where he was going. Nobody wanted to say it, but they knew where he was going. So if you're not sure about how to provide perimeter security, you need to do your research, folks. It's not complicated. You put an armed sheepdog, all right, on that perimeter, and that armed sheepdog protects that school so that active shooter doesn't get through the perimeter to the building. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Janet Peterson, followed by Lana Witt. Janet Peterson, followed by Lana Witt.
No, it's called a sheepdog. It's a term. You know what a sheepdog does? It protects people. It defends life. That's what it is.
I'd like to say, if there are any children watching this, to please leave while I speak. I want to say that I appreciate the work that the school board did on Policy 3200, and I appreciate the positive statement that they made regarding the cooperative partnership between parents, guardians, the community, and schools, and that being the key to fostering and improving educational achievement. And I appreciate that you acknowledge that when you develop the principles governing selection of instructional materials. That's a mouthful. But I'm concerned about part, of course, of those issues. So D says, "The material should be educationally suitable, appropriate for the age, maturity, and grade levels of the applicable students." That's a great job there. However, you put that it should not be pervasively vulgar. I'm going to assume that you're using the same principles when governing selection of library collection materials. I assume that, and I listened and I watched as you discussed and you debated that term, pervasively vulgar. I listened to some of the board members talk about the definition, or request a definition for that term. I listened to some of the school board members say that challenged books were only a few, books with a few selected inappropriate pages. And I even heard someone say, and I'm paraphrasing, that she thought that images referring to a movie were more powerful than what was written and what was read. And so I would like to remind you that a PG-13 movie only allows one curse word, and a PG-17 requires parental presence, of course, as does PG-13. This is a book that is in Wake County Public Schools, and I would like to know if this book would be considered pervasively vulgar. That book is A Court of Silver Flames. I would also like to know about this one, Push, and I asked the public to take a look at that as well. Would this be considered pervasively vulgar? Maybe perhaps this one would be. The haters. I think someone read from this book recently. Is this pervasively vulgar? I contend that it is, and I contend that when you are purchasing and you are challenging, people are challenging books that you consider the content, the theme, and the language. This is not a time for students to have a voice in a challenged decision. This is a time when your job is to show your leadership, your guidance, and do what's right. And here is the word count from Lawn Boy, one of your favorites. I don't want to read it for the children's sake.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. I left copies of content on this book specifically. It was recently highlighted in the News &amp; Observer on the front page. It looks innocent enough, wouldn't you say? The cover of the book. For a moment, I'd like us to pause and envision the experience of my friend in the fall of last year at Athens Drive High School. Imagine substituting as a special education resource teacher in a classroom with students who have IEPs. The main English teacher is teaching the class, welcome her, and tell her to sit in the back of the room as they begin read aloud for the book, The Absolute True Diary of a Part-Time Indian, by Sherman Alexie. During the read aloud, imagine her startle as students in an inclusive classroom with fellow special education classmates were called on to read in front of peers and educators contents that extensively speak about death, committing suicide, body parts of boys as well as girls. Lower area, upper area, don't need to say the words. Functions of those body parts, eating disorders, and more. One of the lines in this book spoke of the excitement of a male in finding out his sister How does this educate high schoolers? And more important, what's the impact on the mental health at any age, the substitute which you have a hard time retaining? And especially the students. As a female student in that class came across the phrase, "Chronic masturbation," at her discretion, she shared, "I'm not saying that." A fellow male classmate said, "I'll say it," and read the words aloud. The teacher then affirmed the male student for reading the words. As a former educator to educators, a few questions arise for me. Who's accountable for this material being in that classroom with special education students? students? Were guardians and parents informed in a timely advance about the contents of this book and given the option to opt in, not opt out, opt in? And how did the lack of affirmation of the female student's discretion impact her and her classmates? What are the rest and objectives and the outcomes for reading such books?
Our next speaker is Becky Lou Hobbs, followed by Jessica Lewis.
Hello. Last time we spoke about Policies 3200 and 3210, and what pervasively vulgar means. Yet most of the board still seems to be supporting this type of materials in school. So here's an example of one of the many books Superintendent Moore, Chair Mahaffey, and the Board support, Jesus Land by Julia Shears. It's rated four on the rating system, which means no minors, adult content, no child under eighteen, yet it's in six of our high schools. The book depicts attempted rape, incest, sex. It also has prolific alcohol abuse and profanity. And I quote, "Scott unclamps my mouth and snakes a hand down my top, groping my breasts through my bathing suit. Not quite ripe, but tasty all the same. Fuck you, I scream at him, craning my neck to look into his eyes. Brad and Todd are now both yanking on the waistband of my sweatpants, trying to force it over my hips. Scott is reaching under my swimsuit. I flail my arms and legs like a possessed rag doll, trying to twist from their grasp." The girl in this book is only twelve here. "I open my eyes in a boozy blur. See his penis jutting from his shorts. He grabs it by the root. Lick it, he says in his thick voice, pressing my head towards it. I've heard girls giggle about blowjobs at school, and it's something a boyfriend requires of you. I stare at Scott's penis. There's a pearl balanced on the tan tip that smells like liver worst. Like a lollipop, he's begging now, breathing hard. He wags his penis, his hand to get my attention. I close my eyes, stick out my tongue, and he touches the side of it. Open your mouth, Scott says, and I do it. He puts it between my lips, grabs my hair, and pulls my head down onto it. A moment later, he groans, and something slimy spurts into my mouth that tastes like pond water." She's thirteen in this scene. So, some of the other phrases in this book that appear multiple times. Whoa, nice utters. You can't jack off with Jesus. Today's a good day for sex. Look at that woody. And the profanity samples? Ass, bitch, dick, fuck, pussy, shit. And that's just a few. The fact that Chair Mahaffey and this board is not objecting to me reading this right now, it's an offense, and it speaks volumes to the depravity of this board. Who could read this or show these obscene pictures at work and not have repercussions? But somehow Chair Mahaffey and the board and the administrators seem to think it's okay to talk to children about dicks, woodies, pussy, and fucking. It's educational, and they want to keep parents out and not know. This is, this is what is pervasively vulgar. I just gave you a sample. Remove it from our schools. Keep this out of the hands of our children.
I would like to remind folks that these three minutes are protected by the First Amendment, and there were different guidelines posted at the front. Please respect the speaker that is speaking and allow them to be heard. Our next speaker is Jessica Lewis, followed by Crystal Amman Chukwu.
Good evening. Here we are a year and a half later, and we as parents are still speaking to you about the obscene material that our children have access to. This is ridiculous that the school board continues to ignore parents on this issue. The book, It's Perfectly Normal, is in Lincoln Heights Elementary School and middle schools including Leesville Road, Davis Drive, Carroll, Centennial, Wendell, also at Allo High School. This book is supposedly for ages ten and older. It instructs young children about puberty, sexual intercourse, STDs, pregnancy, abortion, sexual abuse. It contains illustrations involving sexual activities and nudity. Here are a few quotes. "When the clitoris and penis are touched and rubbed, the body feels good, tingly and warm. It feels sexy. A male can have an erection when his penis is touched and rubbed. When he has pleasurable thoughts, an erection makes it possible for the penis to enter the vagina." The illustration depicts a young man lying on his bed, exposing his penis and scrotum. Masturbating is perfectly normal. Boys and girls experience sexy feelings when they masturbate. Masturbation is touching and rubbing for pleasure because it feels good. During sexual intercourse, the female's vagina becomes moist and slippery, her clitoris becomes hard, and the penis becomes erect. It can involve the penis, vagina, mouth, genitals, or anus. The wetness from the vagina makes it easier for the penis to go in. Sexual intercourse is when a male and female are close to each other, that the penis goes inside the vagina, and the vagina stretches to fit around the penis. When the feelings come to climax, semen is ejaculated from the penis and squirts into the vagina. The book also talks about having an abortion. So now the book is teaching our children, it is perfectly normal to have sex, and then it is okay to get an abortion. Why? Just why? Are you allowing books to target and sexualize our children? Why do ten-year-olds need to know how to have sex? And why do some school librarians feel like they need to have these books like these? Your argument is that you do not want us telling children what they can or cannot read. The street drives both ways, and I do not want my children having access to books like these in the school system. The definition of a groomer is someone who builds a relationship, trust, and emotional connection with a child so they can manipulate, exploit, and abuse them. Librarians, teachers, and school board members that do not protect our children from harmful material are groomers that do not need to be around our children. Policy 3200 states instructional materials should be appropriate for the age, maturity, and grade levels of the students, and not be pervasively vulgar. This book does not align with your policy. Remove it now. As a parent, I cannot believe we are still having to defend this issue. It is past time to stand up and protect our children from groomers, or are you the groomer? And that is why parents want school of choice for their children. The choice is yours. Make the school system about academic performance, or the school system will die in the name of diversity, inclusion, and equity.
Our next speaker is Crystal Amman Chukwu, followed by Patrick Wooden.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am a lifelong North Carolinian. I've been in Wake County for most of my life and received my middle and high school education right here in Wake County Public Schools. I'm here today to express my concern about the priority of academic advancement and our need to invest more resources in the right places and less in the wrong places. This particular book is called Queer: The Ultimate LGBTQ Guide for Teens, and is in high schools throughout Wake County. I'll read some of it for you. Just as there are many different types of relationships, there are a gazillion ways to have sex. Not all gay men have anal sex, nor do all lesbians like oral sex. Not all trans guys wear dildos. It's a rainbow, darling. You'll need to figure out for yourself what you like at some point. Have patience with yourself and get plenty of practice to enjoy sex. Don't worry, very few people will turn down the opportunity for more practice. It talks about touching and rubbing. Genital stimulation can come from any part of the body. You can use your hand, or hips, or feet, or you can rub your private parts on someone's thigh, arm, genitals, butt, and ankles. You may stroke his penis, insert fingers, insert fingers into his anus, or insert fingers into her vagina. It goes on to talk about anal sex. This can involve penetration with the penis fingers or a sex toy. For care of the sex toy, it talks about the anus has lots of bacteria. When spread elsewhere, it can cause problems. If you're going to use a sex toy for anal penetration, be sure to use one that is silicone, as long as it doesn't have electrical components. Just boil it for five minutes and run it through the dishwasher. Penetrating the anus with a foreign object like food can be dangerous. Can be dangerous. So don't think about it, even if it seems like a good idea at the time. Inspiration is a big part of sex. You might find that you're into some weird stuff. Although if you only knew how many people were into weird stuff, you'd realize it's not so weird. Some people like to role play, dress up like animals, tie each other up, wear leather and high heels. Hey, whatever makes your toes tingle. There's no reason to be judgmental about consensual sex. It also goes on to talk about monogamy, that some people like to be with one partner, some like to have others. Either option is okay. I think it's easy to see that this book is of concern. This book is not informational, it's instructional. It's an all-out endorsement and encouragement and playbook on how to discover the rainbow. In other words, to be promiscuous. This book sends the readers, which in our context are teenagers, on a journey to be promiscuous and to explore all kinds of sex. And let's face it, we're talking about teens. If they're exploring their sexuality in such an intense way, they're not studying. They're not preparing for their futures. Let me ask you a familiar question. Is this for grade? Will this be on the SAT or the PSAT or college entrance exams? Let's go back to being a school.
Our next speaker is Patrick Wooden, followed by Dana Ramos. Patrick Wooden.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I want to take the time first to wish everybody a happy Jesus Pride Month. For the month of June, we have designated this month to Jesus Pride because we love the Lord and we believe in biblical principles, and, and we're glad to wish you a Jesus Pride as you wish the rest of us a pride, Happy Pride Month. Now, I'm standing before you today as a grandfather. I got, have wonderful grandkids. I have one who is in the age group of this book when Aiden became a brother. And when Aiden was born, everyone thought he was a girl. But once he came out as a trans boy, Aiden and his parents fixed the parts of his life that didn't fit anymore, and he settled happily into being himself. Aiden didn't feel like any kind of girl. He was really another kind of boy. Now, this book is for kids, five-year-olds, six-year-olds, so forth and so on, and this book is available in thirty-one elementary schools in our county. This is garbage, and whoever is responsible for this ought to be ashamed. And I want to say this. There is a judgment day coming, but there is evidence that the God of the Bible is passing judgment. When God passes judgment, you know what he does? He gives people over to vile affections, vile thoughts, when they reject his truth and decide no matter what, they're gonna believe what they want to believe anyway. You know what God says? He says, "Have at it." And it's evident that in many cases, I'm seeing judgment pass, because there is no way anyone in their right mind can argue that the things that we're hearing today that's being placed in our high schools, elementary schools, middle schools for kids to hear and read and practice has anything to do with making them better, making America better, making our neighborhoods better. This is trash. And I pray that to the extent that you can, you will rise up against this. There ought to be something in us that will make us want to protect the hearts and minds, and even the appetites of our children, and many of them have no sexual appetite at all until they read this. Why are we sexualizing our children? I'm as angry about this as I can be, and I pray that you will consider our words and give our children a chance. They're not sex toys, and they're not your kids. We want to leave raising the children to the parents. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Dana Ramos, followed by Robin Livingston. Dana Ramos, followed by Robin Livingston. After every speaker, I am saying the names of the next two folks, so please listen. Dana Ramos, followed by Robin Livingston.
Okay, my name is Dana Ramos. I'm a Wake County parent and taxpayer concerned about certain reading materials in some Wake County schools. This is not about banning books, books that remain widely available, but it's about keeping inappropriate sexual books out of our schools. One explicit book example titled What Girls Are Made Of by Elena K. Arnold is located in at least fourteen public schools. I will read some of it for you now. "I laid a towel on the sheet in case I bled, and then I watched Seth roll the condom over his penis, and watched his hand push into the flesh between my thighs, spreading them apart, and I watched him maneuver his latex-wrapped erection as he pushed and tried to get inside. If Seth wants to have sex, and I'm on my period, I'm the one to suggest that I give him head. It's the way his fingers look glazed like doughnut after they've been inside me. So you know the girl I'm dating, Nina? No matter how much we do it, or how long I lick her, she just can't come. I pull him out of his underwear, and he's soft in my hand. I open my mouth and pull him into it, and I pull and suck until he grows hard and makes sounds that means he likes it. And I keep going and going, and when he says I'm going to come, I don't pull away. The jet of him is warm and salty and tastes like thickened sweat. I let my knees splay open and find my slit with my fingers, the soft hooded nub at its apex, and I guide the red rubber ball against it. My back arches, and I hiss in a breath at its first wonderful, terrible contact. A jolt of pleasure shoots through me, so different from the jet of warm water that pours from the showerhead, so different from the press of my own hand, so different from the wet lapping of Seth's tongue." There's much, much more. Why is vulgar erotica in our schools for minors? Please explain how this has literary value or supplements academics. Again, this is not about banning books. A parent or teenager can buy this book and find it in public libraries, but most parents, Democrat and Republicans, believe vulgar erotica in our schools is completely inappropriate. This book and many others should be removed from schools. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Robin Livingston, followed by Stacy Campbell.
Good evening. I wasn't here on the sixteenth, but I did listen to all the debate about Policy 3200, and I just was, I'm hoping that most people heard it, and unfortunately, I wrote the speech, but I left it in the car. I, it felt like it was a really honest debate about balancing the legalities as well as the interests of students. I don't believe in censorship. It's very hard to follow some of this. We are not a Christian school, so people have different viewpoints, and I, while I'm uncomfortable with some of the material that is being read right now, I've read some of the books that, that have been on some of the banning, banned book lists across the country. I don't find most of them too inappropriate for a high school kid. So I'm just, I just wanted to let you know that I do support you all. I know these are difficult times, but I want to thank you for your hard work. Thank you.
I want to remind folks to make sure that we can clearly hear speakers, and to keep personal comments to yourself unless you are at the podium. Thank you. Our next speaker is Stacy Campbell, followed by Jim Walsh. And very quickly, at the beginning, I said we had forty-five minutes, and then we were going to get back to business. There is about seven minutes remaining in that time.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to speak really quickly about my mother. She was a Wake County Public School teacher, Special Education, seventy-one years of age. Her name is Paula Brooks. And my mother turned down a position, as a principal, she turned down a position on this very school board. She wrote final exam. She was a major ed coach. She worked at three different of the high schools. She trained countless teachers. She tutored. And when she retired, six months later, when she found out there was a shortage, she came back in and still taught until she died. back in and still taught until she died. I'm here because in February, I tried reaching out to the schools with phone calls, voicemails, and emails, and after a month of no response of trying to retire my mother out, I had to go into the school. And when I went into the school, they didn't give me much help. Needless to say, on the eighth, I was able to change and submit the paperwork finally. And four days later, my mother passed away. And I was told by Ms. Schrod or Shroud in the HR office that even though it was submitted, the paperwork was submitted, and the beneficiary said that it was not valid. It is three months later, and I still holding the check, refusing to cash it until this is fixed. There was no verification given by the HR department, by Ms. Schrod, when I asked her if there was a benefit for my mother or anything in place, because we didn't have all of the information, because in her final days, she was unable to speak. After she told me that there was at least a $25,000 to $50,000 death benefit, I asked her, I let her know that I was going to have the funeral people give her a call. When they called, she gave them the automated system number. As a result, I had to cremate my mother and not bury her. I had to come out of my own pocket to take care of this. I don't wish this on anyone, especially when they're grieving their parent. I cannot understand how, if the paperwork was turned in four days before my mother's death, how it's not valid. As a community activist and ties through ABC 11, I promise you, I will not let this rest. With all this being said, I implore the board and petition you to make changes to policies, make sure people are trained properly, and not just that, why should teachers have to pay out of their own pockets for their own substitute teachers? You have to pay in order to have a day off? These things should not be like this. It is with a heavy, stressful heart that I am here, and I wish this on no one.
Jim Walsh, followed by Susan Book.
All right, let's play a little hypothetical for a couple of minutes. Teachers or other employees overheard having the following conversation while at school. Hannah, when did you first start watching porn? Oliver, very young, probably twelve or thirteen. It's actually quite sad for me to think that by the time I'm twenty-five, I'll spend half of my lifetime watching porn. It developed after I started masturbating. I overheard boastful comments in school from more alpha male lads in the class about masturbating three or four times a day and watching porn. I took it quite literally and began to think I should be doing the same. It led me to watching more and more porn to get the same effect. I ended up watching a lot of hardcore pornography, although by the end, I settled on watching the same eight to ten videos each time, a bit like an alcoholic who only wants one drink. I've watched everything. I'm a cisgender, straight man, about 1.5 on the Kinsey scale, but I have gone through pretty much all of it. Wow, that would be a terrible scenario to hear from teachers or school employees while on school property. Would Policy 3200 regarding pervasive vulgarity be taken into consideration and the teacher or teachers suspended or even fired? Or would it be overlooked, like the book Doing It Right by Hannah Witton, which is at Dine Heights Schools, from which I just read? Has the school board, in its efforts to redefine policies, defined them such that if applied to material housed in the facilities, would be suspended? Or are you setting a new standard that pornography, obscenity, in our schools is the new norm? We know that pornography is to the mind like what was stated earlier about alcohol. You never are freed from it. Are our schools going to be the roadway of our children becoming addicted to pornography? Would you like to stand up and state that happened on your watch? Thank you.
Our final speaker for this portion of the evening is Susan Book.
Every child deserves to feel safe, wanted, and to be given the opportunity to thrive. No child should live in fear at school or in our community. Every person working in our school system should feel safe and be given the opportunity to be themselves. It's June, and it's time to celebrate pride. It's June, and we should be especially conscious, especially in our policy meetings, that our LGBTQ plus students and employees have the right to be, the right to be, the right to have safe existence. Safety, you see, is not SROs patrolling hallways. It is not just in how we monitor our entry doors. Real safety is about the resources, and most importantly, the relationships we build. Knowing that there is someone in your building who validates you is important for everyone. Knowing that there are books for you and your library is important for everyone. It is especially important when bullies come to your door. So I'm here to thank the teachers, the counselors, the principals, who outwardly let our students know through symbols and words that every child is deserving of love. I hope that Wake County schools is brave enough to celebrate pride. I hope they are brave enough to keep books on the shelves that represent all students. For now is not a time to be timid, it is not a time to be a timid ally. Pride is about standing together in the fight for humanity. I ask that all our board and our community stand up for LGBTQ plus students and employees now, more than ever. Thank you.
That will pause this part of public comment. Again, we are going to resume our agenda and come back to this. If you are unable to stay, we welcome an email from you and understand that that was not what you expected when you came in, but we do have business to attend to. That being said, we're going to take about a five to ten-minute pause before we return to our meeting. Thank you.